We good?
Yeah.
Good evening. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, May 13th, 2024. I'll call the meeting to order and start with a roll call to my left. Mr. Baptiste?
Yeah. Yeah.
Good. Ms. Gleason?
Here.
Mr. Corbett?
There.
And I'm Carl Schultz. Mike King will be out this week, so I will be acting as chair. Moving on to preliminary business. Before we get into the details of the agenda, there's a couple of continuance requests, so I thought we'd take those off first. That way, people waiting for those things aren't sitting here. So is anyone on the Zoom for New Leaf Borrego? Is...
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Greg Sampson, Sullivan and Worcester for New Leaf.
Hi, Greg. Thanks for joining us. So just so everyone knows, 0720 New Leaf Borrego, the extension request, and 0920, the extension request, are going to be continued so that we can have a full board when we hear their... hear the next meeting. And Mr. King is not here tonight. Mr. Sampson, when are you proposing we continue to?
So we are unable to make it a week from today, so we were hoping that your first meeting in June would be available, get the full board.
Okay, so June 10th. And I note that Mr. Fixler is on... Attorney Fixler is on as well.
Yes, thank you. What was that date that you had proposed, the 10th?
June 10th. That's the next meeting... next... well, not... the next meeting not in May.
Right, okay. That works for me.
Discussion from the board? Okay, so I need a motion to continue. 0720 New Leaf, the extension request. And it's not really a public hearing, but... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The chair votes aye. So, thank you, guys. We'll have you on the agenda for June 10th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, thanks for attending. The next continuance, 1523 Hidden Trails. It's special permit for cluster development. Mr. Bertolo, could you announce yourself?
Good evening, Brad Bertolo, J.C. Engineering.
Okay. I think I saw in one of the email exchanges you were proposing the 20th, that you want to try and do it next week?
If that's available. I did notice that there is possibly a meeting that night.
Yeah, so I was going to announce it just for everyone and for the record. The next regular scheduled planning board meeting will be off-cycle. It will be Monday, May 20th. That's next Monday. And that meeting will open with an executive session, which means the opening of the meeting will be closed to the public. And then we'll open the meeting when the executive session is done. So we have two items on the agenda beyond the executive session. What do you think, adding these guys? Any thoughts? Just move it a week. Mike, are you going to be here on Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we've...
I'm going to be here remotely.
Yeah, because this is a subdivision. And if we, for example, did come to a vote, it's best if we have a full board, because it takes a supermajority for subdivisions. But remote... if you can attend remotely.
I can.
Okay.
And I plan to.
Okay. So barring any unforeseen circumstances, I'm pretty sure Mike is going to be here.
Okay.
So let's have a motion to continue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And Brad, could you...
Aye.
Okay, and the chair votes aye. If you could just give me a handwritten... Oh, you already sent it.
We had already submitted.
I saw Peter's email.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here.
So thank you for attending.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for holding a special meeting.
All right, Phil is not here yet. I'll hold off until Phil gets here. We have one more quick item. Is anyone from Eversource on? Yes. We're going to take 2223 N-Star doing businesses, Eversource Special Permit, SPR. Welcome. Could you state your name?
Yep, Anthony Valuo, Community Relations for Eversource. And on the line, I have a couple of the project team members, too, that have been here in the past.
Great. I know you're here to make a request, so I'd like to hear your request, and then we'll have a quick discussion and decide what to do.
Yep. Good evening. Thanks for having me again. Just here to make a respectfully request that the project be withdrawn without prejudice, because we need the zoning board appeals for the variance for the island. So we're just going to take it to the zoning board, try to do a one-stop shop there, so...
Okay. Any questions? Well, I have a comment, but...
I'm good.
Okay, so procedurally, in the past, it's not necessary for you to do that. In the past, where we've discovered the need for a waiver in the middle of a site plan review special permit, we've paused the hearing, allowed you to go to the ZBA to get just the variance, and then come back. So you don't have to start from scratch. I'm offering that as an option. Mr. Buckland, do you want to weigh in on that? Is he there?
Yes, I am here. Yeah, the zoning bylaws states that if the... if there's a variance or a special permit issued by the ZBA for an application, it goes before the ZBA for site plan review as well. But in the past, in the most recent past, the board has allowed that they would pause the hearing to permit a variance request to be made.
So procedure...
And then come back to the planning board for completion of the site plan review.
I'll leave it up... well, does the board have any preference? I'll leave it up to you.
I think since we have to go there anyway, it's just easier to do one-stop shop. I appreciate the suggestion. I don't know if some of my colleagues want to weigh in, but I think that's the course of option... the course of action that we're looking to take.
Yeah, this is Brian Poffin from...
Yeah, this is Brian Poffin from Civil Environmental Consultants. How's everybody doing? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. So last time we were in front of you, there was some question as to whether or not the variance would be required for removing the parking lot islands. And so, you know, our... which requires ZBA approval. And so our preference would be to have the ZBA review... continue the site plan review that we've started with the planning board, and just have the site plan review and zoning variance as part of the review under the ZBA.
It would not be a continuation of this hearing. You would need to refile.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, we would have to start the process again and resubmit a denial request to the building department.
Okay, if that's your... if that's your preference, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments from you?
I think that's it.
Okay. I was just offering that option, so you didn't have to go through all that. Discussion from the board?
That's what they want to do.
Okay. So I need a motion to dismiss without prejudice?
Second.
All in favor?
Accept a withdrawal without prejudice.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Can you reword your motion to withdraw without prejudice?
I'd make motion to withdraw N-Star's proposal.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is... Phil's not here yet. Is Tim on? John? Is Mr. Fay on the Zoom? Huh?
Tyler Fay?
Yeah, that would be... that would be... okay. All right. Do you want to wait for Phil Dennis and...
If you'd like, sure.
Yeah, I think having Phil here will be good. Is... Mr. Fay, we're going to wait for Phil Cudaro to arrive. He called and said he'll be here in about five minutes. So, all right, then I'll move on to 3821 David Andrade, 69 Great Neck Road, release of lot covenant.
How you doing, sir?
Great. State your name and for the record, please.
David Andrade.
Go ahead, Mike. You can open. I'll let you speak and then...
Well, I don't know if you received the report from Mr. Cudaro?
We received the report about the... and he's not here, but we did...
I heard that.
Yeah, we did receive the report about the substrate and the... but did you have a chance to talk with the planning office? Because... well, what exactly are you requesting this evening?
Well, to release the lots, so I can, you know, apply for billing permits.
Okay, so there's a lot of work that still needs to be done to release the lots. So did they not reach out to... I need the Form N, the final inspection, a package of all the inspection reports. And I don't know if Mr. Cudaro did the final inspection. I understood there was still work that needed to be done at the catch basins.
The catch basins are all in.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This project needs to have a bond issued for the surety before the release of covenant is made.
I was going to get there, but yes. So we can't release the covenant until we... we can't release till we have a bond and a surety, so...
And who determines that amount for the bond?
That's determined by the applicant, who supplies the schedule of values for the remaining work, and that is reviewed by our consultant, Phil Cudaro, to confirm the amounts.
So you think you're all done?
No, I'm not all done.
And we...
I did give that to Phil. He, you know, he texted me back that he did receive that.
Okay.
So as soon as he goes through it and determines what it is, I mean, we're more than willing to put up the bond.
Okay, so let's go through the process.
Sure.
So if you're not done with the project, we'll put Form N aside. So what you need to do is, once you and Phil agree on the remaining work, how much work needs to be done, and we assign a value, how much money, you know, is worth. There's 125% premium, or you uplift it so that there's a risk factor. Then you either need to post a bond for that amount.
That's no problem.
Yeah, so then, then, once... and then you need to work with the planning office. If we have a bond, there's a form to get filled out. You present the bond to us, the value. We vote to accept the bond. Then you need to go to the select board. They have to approve the bond. Somewhere in there, there's an attorney review on our side, but... so we say we accept the bond and to release the covenant. Go to the select board. They say we accept it. Then you come back here, and we vote one more time, and then you can move forward. So those are... Ken, did I miss any steps? Oh.
No, you covered it all.
Okay.
So the next step would be through the town engineer agreeing to the...
Mr. Cudaro, can you come forward? I know you just walked in. We're going to hit you. We're talking about the steps that Mr. Andrade will have to go through in order to begin selling lots. So I think the next step we're looking for is for you and he to agree on a schedule of values. Is that correct?
That's correct. For the record, Phil Cudaro from Allen and Major Associates. That's correct. Mr. Andrade did send me over sort of an itemized listing this morning as his attempt to start establishing that schedule of values, but I've not reviewed it in detail. There are a few things missing that we need to speak about, so I can present it back to you for the final determination.
Great. So once you agree on the schedule of values, the planning board accepts the schedule of values, you get a bond that didn't work with the town. There's a form for the bond, a form to bring that forward. Bond gets accepted. The bond gets accepted, but I point to Allen. Allen is select board emeritus. The select board then approves it, then we come back, we accept the bond, and then we can move forward from there.
Okay.
Okay? But then, I thought you were already done, because you were looking for the release. Just remember, you need to keep copies of all of the inspection reports. We're going to need an as-built plan at the very end in order to close everything out at the very end. Also, you need to make a decision about a homeowners association. You have to have a covenant and all those things for any... whoever's going to take over ownership of the road, all right? Okay? And we can work... the planning office can guide you through that. So I think we're moving forward?
He is moving forward. I know when he was here late last year, you had laid out sort of that agenda, and he's just marching down the list.
Great. Okay, so we need the next thing... I think the next step is for you and Mr. Cudaro to agree on that schedule of values, you to get a bonding company, or a cash bond. That's an option as well.
Okay.
Cash is always great.
That's right.
But then bring that back. We can release the covenant. Once we have the bond in place, we can release the covenant. That comes off the property, and then you can begin getting building permits.
Okay.
Okay? If you have any... at any time, I'm sure Josh or Ken can help you, and Phil can guide you as well.
Okay.
We just want to work through the process and keep moving it forward.
Absolutely.
Do you have any questions?
Nope, that covers it.
Okay, good. Any questions from the board?
No.
Nope. Okay, so this is not a public hearing, but we don't need to continue it to a date specific. So you can just let us know. Let Sonya know when you want to get back on the agenda, and we'll keep moving it forward.
Okay.
Is Sonya on?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, so my only question is if there's enough money in the 53G account to keep Phil busy, but we can work that out.
Okay.
I think you were going to give her a check for $2,500.
Yeah, that's what she asked for.
So I think we should be all set.
Okay. Super. All right.
Thank you.
Great. You could stay right there, Phil.
Okay. I may have to switch packets.
Oh, okay, you could probably switch packets.
Let me switch packets.
All right. We're going to move on to Bay Point, Phase Two, a discussion of partial release of funds. You're going to come forward. Mr. Welch is going to come forward. Okay, all right. For the record...
Dennis Welch, Stone Street Corp.
Great. And again, Mr. Cudaro.
I'm sorry, Phil Cudaro, Allen and Major Associates.
Great. And I think we have Mr. Fay on Zoom. Great. So we're going to discuss the partial release of funds for Phase Two. Just a couple of business items before we get to Phase Two. Phil, have you... you and Dennis, we still have an open set of issues on Phase One. Have we come up with a final punch list for Phase One?
We had a final punch list on Phase One that we issued. Forgive me, I forget the date. Mr. Welch and I met onsite a couple of weeks ago, so he could update me on the status of completion of those items. A number of the items were completed. So the biggest thing that I would highlight that we don't have is the final updated as-built plan that we had requested.
All right, so we need to work with Tim to get a bond for the remaining work, to bond this off, so we can just keep this moving forward. And were there...
And do you know how much that is, Mr. Schultz?
I... Phil, do you know how much we need to establish a bond for Phase One?
Let me go through my notes. I may have it here. Forgive me.
Yeah, so... and then there are... in your final report, there were some citizens issues. There's still... Mr. Welch, I think you were telling me there's some cleanouts you can't find yet. Was it cleanouts?
No, water gates.
Oh, water gates?
Right.
Okay.
Which that's also part of the as-built issue as well, is providing all the utility information, and the citizens had raised it in their comments also.
Great. Okay, so...
We've only got three more water gates that we have to locate, and he's put all the rest of the utilities and stuff on the plan, so it... the end of this week, Wednesday or Thursday, we're meeting the water department out there to... they're going to help us locate the missing water gates, and then everything will be at our fingertips and be on the plan.
Great, so then we'll be looking forward to your thing. And then all we got to do is get the bond amount to Mr. Fay, and he could bond off Phase One. But it would be nice if we could publish that list of open items, because there are citizens that are concerned, and some of their items will get addressed. Some are beyond our purview, but I'd like to be on the record with that.
Yes, I'm happy to issue an updated letter. I'll get that out to the board today, tomorrow, or the next day.
Great.
As a reminder, some of the citizen-based comments, as you just pointed out, some of them were applicable and some were not.
Right, and I just want to...
We'll maintain that.
Yeah, I just... I want to communicate that to the community so that there's no confusion.
Mr. Cudaro, another inspection might be in order. The crosswalk has been completed. The tapering of the road has been completed. I don't know if you have reviewed that with Mr. Welch.
So what Mr. Fay is referring to is when we did our site walk, there were a couple of items that we had noted on the review letter that weren't completed at the walk. As I understand it, through some photographs that Mr. Welch provided me today, they have done that. So I have photographic evidence. I've just not seen them.
Oh, great. So we'll just wait for your report, and as long as you guys are talking and working together, that was the plan, and we keep moving that forward. Any questions?
Do you have the bond amount?
I don't have it. I apologize. I don't have the bond.
We need to get that to Mr. Fay and to the attorney. Thank you. Mike, you have any questions?
I'm happy.
Hang on. One transition item before we move to Phase Two. One of the things that we did was the completion of Bay Point Drive, all the way out to Onset Avenue, was moved from Phase One to Phase Two. Phil, I looked at the schedule of values for Phase Two, and I don't believe any work on Onset Drive was included in that schedule of values. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And have you not inspected Bay Point Drive? Is that correct?
Also correct. No.
Okay, so we're going to have to figure out how to...
Mr. Schultz, all of the onsite, off-site improvements have been completed.
I need an inspect...
If that's what you're referring to.
Yes, but I need an inspection report for the subdivision plan.
I think Mr. Rowley included all of the inspections for the off-site work with Mr. Campina for the utility work that was done off-site.
All right, so I'm going to... thank you. We need that package, and we need to see it. I was going to bring you, and I'm glad you're on. I will remind you that as part of the subdivision rules and regulations, the applicant is responsible for maintaining and providing copies of those inspection reports to the planning board. So if you look at when we do the final at the very end, the Form N, all of the inspection reports need to be in the package, all of the as-bills. So I'm trying to avoid any future... I'm not looking for it today. I'm trying to identify open items. So we've never had an action item to close out the work and the inspections on Bay Point Drive. It may all be done. We just haven't closed that item out, and we need to do that. And it didn't show up in the schedule of values for Phase Two, so there's no funds to be released. It doesn't look like that work is secured by funds anywhere. So perhaps if there's... if there is work to be done, maybe that needs to be bonded as part of Phase One. I don't know. So thank you. If it's all done, it's all done. We need to just close that loop and tick it off.
I was referring to off-site... I was referring to off-site work that was inspected. Bay Point Drive is part of Phase Two, so whatever is required there... actually, it's Phase Three, I believe, but we'll get to whatever it's supposed to be.
Right, now, that's all I was saying. It's not part of the schedule of values. We've already bonded Phase Three, so any work there is not bonded. We just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that, and we get the inspections, we close it out, so we don't have any problems on Bay Point Drive.
Sure.
All right, so I think that brings us to Phase Two, which is the topic on the agenda. I was just trying to get to the topic tonight, Tim. Or, excuse me, Mr. Fay, I apologize for being informal.
That's fine, Mr. Schultz. I understand.
Okay, so I think, and I'll let Mr. Welch and Mr. Cudaro speak, but I think we're working from your letter dated November 20th. Is that correct, Mr. Cudaro?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so let's... you two discuss it. Do you guys all have a copy of the November 20th letter, which is the schedule of values? For the record, I'm referring to a November 2023 letter, AMR Project 323603, regarding Bay Point Club Phase Two, and it was Mr. Cudaro's report and assessment on the schedule of values and a recommendation on the amount to be released. Is that... hang on, it's two pages, Jane. It's a four-page document.
Yep. That's correct.
Sam, do you want to look at?
Yeah, it's in here somewhere.
All right, well... All right, so any discussion? Mr. Cudaro, any thoughts, recommendations?
My general recommendation is, when the applicant had put in the request, their reduction amount was 848588. Based on the actual observed completion points, we were recommending an adjusted value of 803296, just to account for some items that maybe were overstated in the applicant's review. And we provided that those discrepancies in the two to three pages prior to the summary value. So that would be my only suggestion to the board for consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions? Mr. Welch, any comments?
Nope.
Mr. Fay, the 803296, if we move forward on that, that's... number is acceptable to you?
And that was marked up by the standard 25% by the planning board?
It's just a subtraction from the... from that column on this report. Yeah, so it has the 25% uplift.
And Mr. Cudaro, was it 25% or was it more than 25%?
It's... the planning board adjusted value is a 35% on the schedule value.
Okay, 35%.
So just to put the numbers into record, the current scheduled value is $1,024,839. So if the board were to approve the reduction of 803,296, that would leave you a retained value of 221,543.
Thank you. Discussion?
Is that going to be enough money?
Based on what we saw, that's not complete, it should be adequate money. The predominance is complete.
In today's dollars?
It, well, it's.
Well, I mean, it's a perfectly valid point, assuming it's completed in due course and there's not an unanticipated delay that changes the rates.
A delay? Okay, I have two more points. Mr. Welch, I, as I mentioned before, the subdivision rules and regulations, I'm going to refer to that, if you look at the section, I think it's about release of the covenant at the end, the second paragraph, the planning board will retain 15% of the value of the total road construction for three years as part of the plan, so 15% of a million, $156,000, but it's in subdivision rules and regs. Part D and the second paragraph. So that, but that's.
And how long do you retain that for?
Three years, following, following the end of the project. To bar, to answer the question, somebody said that the road collapses or work is not done, we should have done that for Phase 3, we did not. And if Mr. Fay or you have a question, I'm sorry, I'm quoting from memory, but I can send you the precise reference, but it's in the subdivision rules and regs, which are posted on the town website and it's paragraph D, second subparaphrase.
And that date is measured from what point, we applied for this reduction in June of 2023?
No, it's when the project ends, so that, so that's.
So for point of clarification, does that include the conclusion of Phase 4?
Yes. Well, no, I'm sorry, don't hold me to that, we have to establish what the end date is. I agree to your point that because these were broken down, so it's probably the conclusion of Phase 2, I will confirm that with, Mr. Buckland, do you have an observation, I keep forgetting that we've chunked this into pieces.
Yeah, you're exactly right, we did chunk this into pieces, tranches, and the 15% applies to each individual bond.
Okay, so this would be the, when you deem Phase 2 complete, that's when that, that time would begin.
Okay.
Or when we all deem not, we have to come together and deem that, but.
Again.
Yes, okay. One more point before we take a vote on releasing the funds, is Mr. Turner on the phone?
What's his first name?
Paul.
Paul is stopped by my office earlier today.
Okay, so let me raise the point and then perhaps you can speak to it. We've gotten a citizen's complaint which says, in their opinion, the project is in violation of the original special permit, site plan review, as it's referred to in 580.8, which says you need to maintain an operational golf course, and the contention is that it has not been operational for a year and a half or some amount of time, so we've asked for Mr. Turner to do an inspection and provide a report, so there is a concern about being in violation of the special permit. So Mr. Buckland, do you have comment?
Only what he had told, referred, relayed to me in the conversation this afternoon was that he had checked in with the golf pro and determined that there was, there were nine holes that are operational at this time, not sure if the remainder of the course is under temporary construction or not, but since he didn't do a site visit yet. But in the zoning, it requires that an operational golf course of 70 par be in operation at the site to allow the special permits to be issued for the mixed use. And the the golf course is, he had emailed Tim Fay, asking him if the golf course was operational at this time, fully operational, and has not heard back from Mr. Fay as yet.
Okay, thank you for that, so I do understand that the.
Mr. Schultz, let me, let me respond to that.
Hang on a minute, would you wait one second?
Certainly.
I will give you an opportunity, I promise, so I do understand that each of the phases of development, Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, and Phase 4 are independent and we can't hold one contingent on any of the others, and we're operating under that circumstance. However, I'm looking for Mr. Buckland to provide advice, the site, the special permit is an overarching permit, is that correct?
The special permit is for each individual phase, but the zoning bylaw requires that an operational golf course be in place of 70 par, and you can't change the zoning by special permit.
Oh, okay, so it's not an issue of the special permit, it's truly a bylaw issue, thank you for that clarification. One more clarification, how do we, and I'll let Mr. Fay respond in a moment, how do we consider this bylaw violation, my word, as we consider the request to release funds and to move forward and how do the two interoperate?
I think they can be taken separately. A special permit was duly issued for each of the individual phases. And the zoning bylaw applies to the property as a whole that allows those special permits to be issued, but we don't have an official report from the zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner, Paul Turner, at this point, so we can't know if there's actual violation of the zoning bylaw.
Okay. Questions from the board, and I haven't forgotten you, Mr. Fay, questions from Mr. Buckland from the board?
Wasn't this some terminology of professional grade or tournament grade golf course? Regular, okay. Nine holes wouldn't.
Okay, so we still need Mr. Turner's report, so that is, I don't think we can act on that issue tonight, but it is being looked into. Mr. Fay, I, you've been patient, I'm going to let you respond.
Well, I'm sure you've all been seen in the news, the Washington Bridge in Providence, Rhode Island, I spent a little over two hours on it today, so I, in my car, I read an email from Mr. Turner that I received this afternoon, I have not responded to it, but I am certainly welcome the opportunity to give Mr. Turner a tour of the golf course. As part of the approval in developing Windwood Pines, we relocated a golf hole, it certainly is an 18-hole golf course, we've invested many, many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars into the golf course to improve it, and we are now waiting for Mother Nature to grow a little grass to open the second hole. There's a loop of the golf course that is contiguous and we, our expectation is that it will be open prior to Memorial Day, that requires a little bit of sun, a lot of nurture from our golf course crew, and a little bit of grass.
Okay, thank you, so with respect, and I'll defer to the board, but I'm going to summarize, with respect to the citizen's complaint and any potential violation of the bylaw, we can't take action tonight because we don't have, we don't have the report from the zoning enforcement officer, so I suggest that we table that and schedule that for an agenda item as soon as Mr. Turner has completed his report.
Is that a citizen complaint available for Mr. Welch to take this evening?
I believe it's public record, but it's part of the public record, it was sent to the planning office as far as I know.
How would I get a copy of that?
We can, Ken can, or Josh, Josh?
Can we read it into the record this evening?
I don't know, we don't have it, I'm sorry.
I don't have it, but.
But it will be part of the record for this. We don't actually have an open project, so we'll find a way to make it part of the public record. I'll tell you what, Mr. Fay, when we get Mr. Turner's report, we'll read it into the record at that time.
Very good, thank you.
But we'll get you a copy of the, Josh can send Mr. Welch a, that's an action item for the minutes. Okay, so we'll table that until we get the report and we'll let you know, we'll get you on the agenda to address and close out that issue.
Great, thank you.
Very good.
But we've determined though, it's not, doesn't affect our discussion on the article before us, which is the release of funds, so to summarize, there was an initial Schedule of Values established at $1,024,839, we've had no releases on this schedule yet, Tim, is that correct?
We have not.
Thank you, that was my.
The planning board, the planning board has not done the documentation necessary to record and effect a reduction in the bond amount, from my understanding of what actions you have taken. There was one reduction that took it down to 800 some odd thousand dollars, but the planning board never recorded that as a reduction, so it's my understanding we're going this evening from the original amount to the stated value that Mr. Cudero referenced as the remaining value of the bond.
Thank you, that was what I was trying to confirm, I wanted to just make sure we're all on the same page, so the original value was $1,024,839, the recommended reduction, the amount of the reduction is $803,296, which leaves a.
$45,000.
Balance, the balance is more than $45,000, the balance.
221543, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, 221543 would be the remaining value on the Schedule of Values, and I do note that that value does exceed 15% of the original cost, so we're not, which was the reference I made to the subdivision rules and regs, so I'm looking for a motion to release $803,296 on the Schedule of Values for Phase 2. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
The second is by Mr. Baptiste. All in favor, is there any discussion before I close the discussion? A vote?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye, so that's three affirmative, one negative, and this is just a simple majority, is that correct, Ken?
Yep.
That's right.
Okay. All right.
I'm good.
I don't think we have any other, we have some open items on Phase 1, which you guys are working on.
We'll do.
We've got to figure out what to do with Baypoint Drive, not to let that dangle, I'm not gonna, I promise I'm not going to forget it, whatever we do with it.
Do we need a motion to table this?
No, I think we took care of this, I do think we've agreed that as soon as we have Mr. Turner's report on the zoning bylaw violation, we will schedule another hearing, or whatever, it's, it's not a hearing, but.
Continue with.
Another discussion, and at that time we'll proceed on that matter.
So, Mr. Schultz, may I ask a question or two, if possible?
You can, if I can answer them, or someone can answer them, we'll try.
Part of our development plan was to do improvements to the golf course. Unlike many types of construction, golf courses cannot be improved from November to late April, it requires growth of grasses and other material. It was contemplated in the approval that there would be periods of time where the 12th hole, for example, is where homes are being built, a new hole was being built, and their improvements would be made to the golf course. How is it that we could do those improvements and not close a hole, given Mother Nature enough time to allow the grasses to grow back?
Two and a half years is not enough.
I think what we'll do is.
What was that?
For that, for that question, we'll rely on Mr. Turner's report, and when you and Mr. Welch presumably do the inspection, that can be mentioned, or when we, when we discuss Mr. Turner's report, we can address that question at that time, I don't have an answer to that at the moment, I don't know if that factors.
I appreciate that, Mr. Schultz, thank you.
I don't know if it even factors into the.
Will this be a zoning board issue that I will go in for, or will it be a planning board issue?
This is, I'm, once we get Mr. Turner's report, if there's a violation, we'll figure out, if there is a violation, we'll figure out the proper course, so far we haven't determined that there has been a violation, so all we have is an allegation at the moment.
Very good.
But I appreciate your question, I don't know if that's a, I'll have to look at how the enforcement goes, it's going to go to either us or the ZVA, one or the other, or the select board possibly, depending on the, okay, we'll figure that out if there is a violation, but we'll get that on the table here and get it in the open, I'm just trying to keep all this in the open so that everybody knows what's going on, and I appreciate your attendance this evening.
Very good, thank you very much.
Did you drive, you couldn't drive over the Baltimore Bridge, right, it's still gone.
So, so no, it's worse than the Baltimore Bridge, it's the Providence Bridge.
Oh, the Providence Bridge, I thought.
Providence, I came from Warwick, it took me, so I came from Warwick to Barrington in two hours and 10 minutes, I could have swam across the bay quicker, insane.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said Baltimore Bridge, but you're right, the Providence Bridge is also a mess.
But it's got to be better than Baltimore, it's still there.
Yeah. Thank you for coming this evening.
All right, thank you very much.
So Phil, do you want to walk that again, or what do you want to do?
Yeah, let's talk offline. Do a quick walk.
That brings us to continued public hearing for 1223 370 County Road LLC Site Plan Review Special Permit.
Hi, good evening, Attorney Julian Morton here for the applicant.
And I'm Richard, we own Prime Engineering. Hi.
So I know we don't have a full board tonight, but I think this is just a good time to update on what's going on.
Great, yes.
So, you want to start with the, what we're at?
So, subsequent to the last planning board session, the fire captain informed us that he had not given comments, but that he had some concerns, and was primarily that he wanted a 20-foot wide, all-season drivable road to the solar arrays, so we arranged to have a site walk with him and his associate, walked the entire area, and he agreed to one pinch point where the reservoir and the abandoned bog is narrower, the wetlands don't allow a full 20-foot road, so he said because that was a straightaway, he would allow a pinch point, but he wanted more detailed plans, so our survey crew has gone out and done topographic survey of three critical areas, and we're redoing the plans, and we're obviously going to have to go to the Conservation Commission because now because now we're getting closer to the wetlands, we're getting right to the edge, there's no buffer zone. So we will be submitting revised plans to you, and there'll be a revised narrative. And as you know, we subsequently had a very nice site walk with two of the planning board members, and that site walk was successful, and instead of looking at plan, actually looking at the actual site. And I think it was general agreement that our line of site studies were less important, that, you know, when you're standing on the street or even the first few hundred feet of the site, you're not gonna see any of the solar arrays. And that the smaller solar array is adjacent to a neighboring solar array, so even if there was some visibility, it'd be one array looking at the other. And we also talked about having a forester do an assessment of the trees, and so that forester set up five quadrats, 100-foot by 100-foot quadrats, three in the larger array and two in the smaller array, and then did an assessment of trees over 18 inches. And he found that out of those five arrays, which totaled about 1.15 acres of land, there were 16 trees that qualified as being 18 inches or over. And the vast majority is white pine. There's some signs of some hardwood harvesting in the past, but most likely for firewood, not necessarily for sale, because there's just a paucity of hardwood. And he, again, in the narrative, will explain all of this in the narrative and have his full report in the appendices. He valued the harvesting of the trees and the arrays at $2,900. So the homeowner, the landowner, would typically get paid the $2,900 for harvesting and selling the white pine, for what it's worth. We've also added in the narrative the fact that we've designed retention basins rather than detention basins. Basically, the typical project has a detention basin, we hold back and slowly let the flood waters go, but you might double the volume, even though there's no increase in peak. In our case, we're capturing 100% of the runoff and infiltrating it in the ground, which is exactly what's happening right now. So there's no change in rate or volume of runoff of the site. Right now, 100% of it goes in the ground. After the development, 100% will go in the ground. So basically, there's no need for an extensive hydro geo-study. We've done deep test pits and provide all the data. And again, in the appendices, we'll discuss all of that, but that should cover that. With regards to endangered species, we've had the Natural Heritage Program confirm that there are no endangered species on site. We know that the... a few residents mentioned that there were some other animals that aren't endangered, but that they're important, such as fisher, you know, fox and the like. And again, in the narrative, we've added a section where we're discussing how, because we're doing a pollinated meadow, we have ideal conditions for all of those small critters, that we keep the fence six inches off the ground so they can come in easily, and there's very good habitat. Right now, there's not very good habitat, because you've got almost 100% land cover in the wooded areas, and then just exposed areas in the cranberry box. By having a diversity of vegetation in a solar array, it'll provide a diversity so that we'll have improved habitat over current conditions. So I think that with some basic narrative, we can show you that what we're proposing is not deleterious to the overall environment.
Thanks, Reg. So that's...
Just may I ask a summary question?
Yeah, of course.
So you're going to go back before the Conservation Commission requesting a determination, is that correct?
Yeah, we're gonna modify our plans so that they have to basically agree that there's gonna be more impact on the buffer zone.
So you're going back to them, and we'll need to get an updated report from their findings.
That's right.
Yep.
We actually haven't issued a determination yet.
I think it's an open matter.
Yeah, it's still an open matter.
Good, yeah, so that's still pending.
Yep.
We will get revised plans, they will get revised plans for that, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. You did the tree inventory, we're looking... we don't have that report yet, but that will be included in something...
Yeah, we want to compile it all with the appendices, so you're not...
I'm just trying to... thank you.
Yep.
Yep. So, and then you've got a report from Natural Heritage, a wildlife kind of report, and we haven't seen that yet, but that will be included in your...
That's right.
...in your assessment, or your response. Okay, those, I think, those were the only things that you listed in your action plan, is that correct?
That's right.
In your summary, okay.
Yeah, thank you. So you summarized, we have all these pieces to the puzzle that we want to make sure we compile for you. And I know that the Principal Eric Chrisler also submitted to the Planning Department some questions, and so I don't know if you saw that letter submitted. It was questions that... from the site walk, and so we went back and forth with Ken a little bit, so we are trying to...
I don't know if I've seen that yet, but as long as it's part of the record, yeah.
Yeah.
Has anybody seen that? You haven't seen that recently?
No.
Okay, well, they're gonna provide that.
Thank you.
And, let's see, what else? So I think we want to just have a...
We had a discussion on ancient ways.
Yeah.
Basically, in the old days, a couple hundred years ago, you know, ancient ways were basically like adverse possession, where if somebody could prove that the public had used a path across somebody's land openly, hostile, you know, continuously for 20 years, they were able to basically go to the courts and get a determination that that is an ancient way. The Acts of 1846, Massachusetts Acts, changed that. They said, no, for this to be an ancient way that's allowed for the public, you have to go through town meeting vote, you have to go through a specific process, and you no longer get prescriptive rights. So basically, ancient ways only existed prior to 1846, and 20 years prior to 1846. Essentially, 1826, you'd have to have done it and gone to court and gotten that degree. So we've made the determination, there are no ancient ways on this site.
Great, all right, that will be included in your report, is that...
Well, yes.
Attorney Morton, could you include, just in the brief that you send, sort of a summary of that? That was sort of a legal position.
Yeah, absolutely.
Your ancient... so actually, we hear this quite often, so if there is actually a legal position that you're going to stand on, that'd be great, we'd like to see that.
Absolutely, yep.
Right.
And I think that would help the citizens as well, who also bring this up.
Right.
So include that in your package.
There's another provision that the planning board deals with sometimes, which is, in the subdivision control law, it says a way which was in existence prior to subdivision control law, which in the opinion of the planning board is adequate in lining grade for the traffic, which can be basis of frontage. That's not an ancient way, that's just...
That's a way for A&R and things like that, yes.
Right, and that won't happen here.
Yeah, and that wouldn't be in the middle of your property anyway, I don't think...
No.
Okay. So if you would just include that in your summary package, that'd be great as part of your submission.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is the first time anyone has actually referred to a point of law when we brought this up, so I'd be interested to look into that. We haven't heard of a point of law on ancient ways.
Been around a long time, it sounds like a bunch of... I'll be impressed, like I said, it's a learning curve, you know, they're gonna make a better life for the animals, and they must be right.
Okay, well, no, we're not making a sit... we're just getting input.
Yeah, we just thought the best way to do that would be through one report, rather than sprinkling, like, we have the foresters' report.
Oh, great.
This way, we have a full document with the appendices, I'll include a legal opinion in there. I think it will really show that the planning board is really vetting the project specifically for the site, which was one of the concerns that we had. We know that there are several other things going around, you know, us and different projects, but really looking at our site specifically, so we appreciate that. I do believe, also, I spoke to the landowner's counsel, he might be online, and I would like him to introduce himself. So this is, the landowner is represented by separate counsel. Do you see Attorney Bob Moore, Robert Moore?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd recommend you shut up.
Needs to unmute.
Can you start?
Bob, unmute.
You may not be there at this time.
Okay.
All right, if he joins John or something, we'll let him in.
Yeah, so I spoke to him about the project, and we're obviously working together on this, and, you know, his client's position, the fact that this is gonna allow the farm to continue to be operational, and so, yeah, I just wanted him to be on record, showing this.
Good, because I don't think they plan to operate the box, so I'm literally clear what it means to be operational. I'd love him to answer that question.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Well, maybe he stepped away.
All right.
To further that question, there was a question raised in some of the material that came in about whether, in the stormwater management report or study, whether the panels were considered impervious or not.
Okay, so that is 330 CMR 22, and we have a response from the town planner about the applicability of 330 CMR 22. Mr. Buckland, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, I know you sent me the response, I didn't forward it to anybody, I didn't know it was gonna come up tonight. Could you share your opinion on the applicability of 330 CMR 22?
I don't think that the panels can be considered benign, because it's much like a roof of a house, a roof of a building, that water sheets off at a faster rate than the existing ground around it. And so it collects, the time of concentration and the collection of the water happens faster because of the runoff from the panels. This is something that can be calculated in the drainage system, though, and can be accommodated to reduce the impacts of the runoff.
Okay, so do we need an updated stormwater calculation based on the surface... just let me finish my question. Mr. Buckland, do you think we need an updated stormwater calculation based on the runoff from the panels?
I question that, based on the fact that the... he said that the stormwater is all retained on site, and percolates into the ground over time. I would think that the concern there is only that all this water, will it perk in an appropriate amount of time? And so test pits and perk tests would be appropriate to require, in this case, to know that this functions as proposed.
That would be after the fact?
That would be for the design.
Oh, for the design.
For the design, yep.
Okay. Wait, one... I'll let you respond. Do you have anything else on this, Mr. Buckland?
No, I don't.
Okay, Mr. Cudero, at the last meeting, I also asked you if you would form an opinion, and have you done so? Or if not, then the answer is, I have not.
I have, I just want to be clear on what you're asking the opinion on, which is the applicability of 330 CMR 22, and not necessarily whether, you know, the stormwater test pits, et cetera.
Okay, all right.
So at the last meeting, it was brought up, somebody had referenced that 330 CMR 22 does in fact suggest that the solar panels be considered impervious for land under agricultural control, and my opinion after reading it is that wouldn't apply to this land, because that was a very specifically defined program, that if the land was going to continue to be used under the agricultural permit, then you would treat the panels as impervious. So I think I had mentioned before, it was apples and oranges, and it remains apples and oranges. So my opinion is what the applicant had submitted for stormwater was appropriate, given the guidance that's available under Town of Wareham bylaws and also MASTI EPE regulations.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Cudero?
That makes sense. So there is no plan, and so I guess we were waiting for the other attorney to speak to this about whether the land underneath is to be used, because there was discussion about it being continued farm use, and I'm curious to what extent, and so that may go to that question of applicability of 330 CMR 22.
But it won't be the land under the panels, anyway.
If, oh, if I may through the Chair to Mr. Buckland, if you so choose to ask this then, but my understanding was that there were situations where this wasn't accounted for, and then there were some disastrous issues that happened downstream. So the fact that it's being retained actually in that area, too, not even necessarily near her home, you know, I think it should be separate. I mean, and you can ask the town engineer regarding that.
So that was addressed to Mr. Buckland, if he chooses to respond, or Mr. Cudero?
Bill, yeah.
I'll defer to Mr. Buckland first.
I'll defer to Mr. Cudero.
So to weigh in from the stormwater perspective, the applicant is, again, correct, if they're doing 100% containment, it almost is immaterial, you know, what the calculations are, as long as the basin is large enough, which they've provided that it is, all the stormwater is retained, as long as the soils are appropriate and consistent, which they have indicated they are, we've seen the test pit logs that were available, they checked the box, that it's appropriate what they're doing.
Do we need more test pits, or not?
I don't believe we do. I guess I would defer to the applicant to confirm if there's going to be any sort of alteration to what they've proposed for stormwater, from what I have seen. If it's bigger, different configuration, then the answer to that question may be yes, but if their response to you is no, we're not changing it, then no additional testing would be needed.
Yeah, we're not changing the size. We've got, what you've already seen, what he saw in calculations, what we're submitting. We're expounding on it, some narrative to explain, in layman's terms, why, you know, it's appropriate.
But what I would append to that, though, for the board's consideration, is during construction, it is important that those soils should be verified, somebody put a second pair of eyes on them to make sure they're consistent. This is a very sensitive area, everybody is very concerned, as they should be, so to support the calculations, they should just be checked when available during construction.
So a condition could be that we have inspections at appropriate times during the construction.
Yes.
So for the record and for the note taker, remind us that we need to put a condition, should we approve the project on inspections of, how would you phrase it, of the soil perk during...
So initial inspection of the underlying soil during excavation within the detention and stormwater areas.
For the record, thank you. And that's acceptable?
Yeah.
If we were to approve the project, that that would be a condition of approval?
Makes sense.
Other questions from the board?
No questions.
Mike?
We're gonna get some... well, no, I'll mose that.
No, no, go ahead, ask if you've got a question.
I was gonna ask about the box turtles, but they don't want to hear that now.
Well, they're going to make a report, so we'll see what it says about the box turtles and the terrapins and the red... the red... it's the terrapins.
The turtles of concern are those that hang out in the... The turtles of concern are those that hang out in the stream and near the stream. They tend not to be in the super-dry areas of the white pine.
Box turtles are tortoises. They live on dry land. They don't go in the water.
He's talking about the box turtles. I switched the topic on you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the box turtles as well. Okay, so it will be in your report. We'll evaluate your report, see if we have any questions.
Can we see if Attorney Moore, Attorney Moore, are you there? No.
Okay, so if you could let him know.
Got to get a letter or something, just for the record, so you guys can.
Yeah, because we did do the site walk, and those bogs are not operational. So the question came up, how can the contention be that this is going to be maintained as a, an operational farm? It's not an operational farm.
I don't think that, maybe it's in semantics, it's the fact that being able to maintain with real estate taxes and have the farm.
It's not a farm anymore, though.
You can call the home, whatever you want to call it.
Homestead.
Whatever you want to call it.
Just clarify, because when it was said in the application, the farm would remain operational, that's how I read it, whether that's a quote or not.
Okay, yeah.
My impression was, the family plan is, we want to pass this operational farm down, but it's not an operational farm, so clarify.
At the original hearing, the landowner said it wasn't a working farm, it would be continued as a working farm. That's what she said for the record.
I'll go back.
That's what she said.
I mean, and that can be agriculture includes, like, having blueberry bushes and having, you know, goats and chickens and a little narrative.
Can we get a clarification? And we will take that into our deliberations.
That covers 61A, too, the agriculture.
I understand, you're coming at it legally, I'm coming at it semantically as a layperson, but we'll get that clarified.
All right.
I do have a couple of questions, and then we'll open the public hearing. Mr. Cudaro, I have your final report sometime in March. Did you guys issue a response to Mr. Cudaro's last report? It was like March 24th, I think, was the, that was approximately the date.
His last report? I don't think we did. I don't think we came to you. And?
Okay.
There were questions in the report? Were there questions that we had to address to you?
So we had a couple of final comments on the last materials that had come in, and I don't think we saw a response, Mr. Cudaro.
Okay, so if appropriate, please respond. If there is no response, say, we accept the report as submitted. It's great, thank you. But I see it as an open item. I recognize Mr. Farady, but one second.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I was, Mr. Farady raised his hand. I asked him to wait, because I had one more question. This is just a point of interest. On the site walk, we found a pole, the, don't ask me orientation, but there was a pole, it was staked off. I was wondering, did you ever discover, it was marked, it was laid out, it was, there was safety tape around it, and nobody sort of knew what that pole was demarking. We couldn't find it on the map. I, so I was just wondering, did you ever discover what that pole was demarking?
I think we decided it was a traverse stake, that.
I may have missed that discussion, so, yeah. What is a traverse stake?
When we survey a piece of land, we put in a reference. Sometimes it's a spike in the ground, sometimes it's a oak hub, and then we mark it off so we can find it again, and we set the instrument up on that, and then we turn angles and measure from that point.
Okay.
So there are traverse points that are meaningless to anybody except for the surveyor who's conducting the.
But it was a question, now you took us out there, you showed us the site, we saw this thing, and nobody knew what it was.
Okay, I'm 95% sure it was a traverse stake.
Okay. It doesn't appear to be a big deal, but it was a, we didn't have any other.
Yeah, it didn't appear on the drawings, but I understand what you're saying. It's an instrument of doing the survey, and it really is, as you said, meaningless to.
Do you accept that that's a reasonable explanation for what we saw?
I do, I do.
Thank you. All right, thanks. That was my other question. All right, this is a, anything else from the board? Mr. Farady?
There's a request for public comment.
Okay, I'm about to open. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it for public comment. Given that Mr. Farady raised his hand first, we'll let the speaker in virtue.
They're in this seat, unmuted.
Oh, this is the landowner?
Yes, good evening. I'm, my name's Patricia Zimmer. I live at 370 County Road, and I wanted to respond to Sam's question about property being in production. It's currently, there's not a cranberry crop in production necessarily, but what we want to do is maintain some sort of farming on this property. We do have the beehives, which I think you may have seen, and I personally would like to go back to growing trees, other than the red maples, which we seem to grow very well without any help. So it's an ongoing project, which I just want to keep it in agriculture and keep it in agriculture in the future, if that's any help.
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your input. We'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Other citizens' comment? Anyone in the audience would like to address this matter? I don't see anyone in the audience, any, oh, Mr. Lentilla. I see Mr. Lentilla.
Eric Lentilla, 15 Skorlisle Road. For the record, I have submitted a lot of information pertaining to endangered species, et cetera, on this site, as well as the other proposed building that might happen at this place. It has been stated by 370 County Road Solar that their site is not located within the estimated prior habitat area of rare species, based upon a review of the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program maps. This is brought up, that all of the solar projects, and this site does state where there are high priority habitat areas and where there are not. And they use that part of that site specifically for stating that this is not a high habitat area. However, there are other categories that this site, that should also be considered and be looked at, being that they provide a larger, more comprehensive and factual layout as to what actually exists when it comes to endangered species sites in Massachusetts. To find specific information on endangered species, one would go to the category of the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, but the subcategory, Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, Rare Species Viewer. This is where you will find, given the listings of all 430 to existing endangered, threatened, and special concern species in Massachusetts, which includes pictures of plants and animals, along with detailed information and specific area maps showing their locations. These descriptions of maps do include, and do include, hidden trails and the proposed 370 County, or hidden trails, hence 370 County solar surrounding areas. Our forests are disappearing at an alarming rate. Our wildlife corridors are being disrupted. Our waterways are being disrupted, and in many cases, our safe drinking water is in danger. There's already a solar field just northwest of this site. Another developed project is being proposed. This whole area, all of a sudden, is going to be inundated in one way, shape, or form. When we look at one individual project, as being stated here, it doesn't seem to be that much of an issue, but all of a sudden, what you need to also realize is what else is on the board, what else is being proposed? So, and it's a difficult decision to pick and choose, not that that's what you're going to do, but at the same time, when you're looking at one project like this, you've got to look at the other one that's being proposed next to it, and the other one that exists just northwest of this. These are decisions, we're talking about development of these type of places, where all of a sudden, they're propping up side by side. Everything is being patchworked throughout the town, and we just need to be more specific, more in tune to site location as these development projects. There's at least 19 large-scale solar fields have been built to date, with several proposals in the works. There already exists a solar field, like I said, northwest of this site, and Wareham is saturated with these fields. At some point, my thinking was also that the Conservation Commission looks at these plans, and they're inundated with projects, home building, everything along the coast. There isn't, and to all respect to Josh, his hands are full when he's got to look at all these projects, but nobody looks at the big picture in Wareham. Looking at the map, where all of these places, where all major development is happening, how will it affect not just wildlife corridors, but even the aquifer? There's a whole lot of issues, and just looking at one plan at a time, somebody needs to be really looking at the big picture. There's somebody should be designating areas where solar can go, housing development can go. These places, they're kind of popping up willy-nilly, but nobody's really looking at the safety and concerns for the town, in all respects. There's, nobody's really against solar, even in housing. We need housing, except where they're being, where they're going is the big issue. There are plenty of places that are abandoned sites, that are not being used. Obviously, money's the big issue, and there's tax issues in relation to that. So these are the big things that need to be looked at. And this area, I have to take a little, I'm a little surprised. This area where the solar is proposed is forested. I can't believe that putting in a meadow with solar panels is going to be a better habitat for animals. That's absurd. This place is full of habitat life that's out there, and the idea to just think that, you know, that a solar field, that's meadow-like. And the relation, just the comment about the turtle, I mean, box turtles, tortoises are laying, they're all over the place out there. So there's a little bit of misinformation. I think information that could be better looked into in relation to what's really happening out there. And one question to the proposed here. The information they got from the heritage, natural heritage, was that on-site, or did you have somebody actually come out there to do, to look on-site, to make that determination?
We, no, nobody from Natural Heritage went on the site. They have official maps where they have generated habitat for species. We contacted them, and we have a communication from them in writing saying, there's no endangered species habitat on the site, which we will share with the planning board.
Thank you.
And that's what I'm referring to.
Thank you.
And there are the other sites to be looked at, so they are threatened, they're endangered. It's a controversy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we do responses to the individuals, or do you want to wait me to wait?
Sir, was there a need to respond? I mean.
I just want to make a point of order to, that it's really important to us to really speak to this site.
I.
And I know you know that, but I just want to get that on record, so we have that in the record.
Thank you.
If something happens, so.
I noted that he strayed, and I didn't call him on it, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if, when you speak, you frame your questions to this specific site, in this specific project, and I will, I was going to respond, and I just, Mr. Lentilla, if you could hold on for one second? He left. Okay, so the previous speaker made a couple of statements, and I didn't respond, but I'm going to respond. Wareham does not have a bylaw that allows us to look at cumulative impact. This has been reviewed with town council, and we have the opportunity to create such a bylaw, but we do not have such a bylaw at the moment. So while we're informed by cumulative impact, we're not ignorant of cumulative impact, we cannot issue a finding based on cumulative impact at the moment. We can look at improving the bylaws. The other thing is, the previous speaker said, there's housing going in everywhere, and there's no one looking at that. I reject that position. There is a zoning, the town is zoned. It has been zoned for quite some time. It's zoned residential everywhere. So houses can go everywhere, almost everywhere, in town. Everyone is allowed to look at the zoning map. Everyone can look at the use table in the zoning bylaws. And further, I'm somewhat offended, this planning board has been very actively, at every town meeting for the last four town meetings, we have put forth attempts to improve the zoning bylaw to respond to the changes, but there, it's a process, and you need to vote, and the town has been very supportive. The town has voted for every one of our recommended changes. The attorney general has turned down three-fourths of them, but we keep trying. So I wasn't going to react, but this board is very much aware of those issues. And today, we're going to have a public hearing very much on development in town, on the urban renewal plan. Now, it's not the whole town, but it's an active, working relationship with the redevelopment authority, the planning office, the select board, this board, to look at how we can move the town forward. I encourage you to look at the master plan. It needs improvement, but it's coming up on five years, and we should relook at the master plan every five years. So there are people who look at this, but we have constraints. And I wasn't going to respond, and I'm sorry for, and I wish Mr. Lentilla hadn't stepped out, but I'm sorry, I took your time.
No, that's okay. So I don't know if my comments are appropriate.
Please.
So first, let me say, thank you for what you do, because it blows my mind how detailed the issues are and how much knowledge and understanding it takes. And I know you're compensated well, right?
Yes.
So, thank you for.
Could you introduce yourself also?
Sacrificing your time, yes. My name is Millie Burrows. I live in the Shangala neighborhood. So I guess I'm not sure if my comments are appropriate, because I don't know that it's really site-specific, so I think I'm just going to address the issue of the fragmentation and ask you, because I think the cumulative effect is an incredibly important one, if I can support the work that's going on in that, because that really is the crux of what I'm going to say. So, just two points on that matter. It, you know, it doesn't seem like it's a huge amount of land when you look at, you know, a chunk of acreage here and a chunk of acreage there, but it does make a difference, because so many of the insects, the mammals, the reptiles, they're specific, and they're plant-specific, like the monarchs, you know, we don't have enough milkweed, and so their population is totally dependent. Well, there are many relationships like that. And with fragmentation, that's one issue. The other issue is, some species, like the hooded warbler, won't even reproduce on a small parcel, because they need other couples in the area, because they like to fool around. So if the parcel is not big enough, then they won't reproduce, and the numbers will go down. And I just want to give you an example with some specifics that might highlight that. It's not about the warblers. It's about a 35-acre plot in Delaware. It was bordered by agricultural fields on one side, two athletic fields on another side, and a highway. And when they started out, they took account of the box turtles. There were 91 in 1968. 26 years later, there were 45. Eight, nine years later, there were 12, because there was no corridor for them to hook up to the larger habitats. So size matters. It matters for how much food they can access. It matters for how large the population is to withstand the extremes in. It matters for how large the population is to withstand the extremes in weather that we see more and more of, and the whole issue of being able to reproduce successfully. So I think the one thing that really hit home for me was a quote, it was a metaphor for this whole phenomenon, and it was, and it was in Doug Talamy's book about nature's best hope, and he was quoting David Quammen, and this is what he said, "A forest fragment is no more like a forest than a square of a Persian carpet is like a functional rug." So hopefully, as we go forward, we'll be able to create a bylaw that will provide more protection, and I'd like to help support that effort.
Thank you.
And thank you again for all that you do.
I don't think you need to respond to that.
That's fine.
I mean, you can, but I don't...
No, it's just from a place of making sure, you know, the town's protected and staying specific to the project, so...
Yep. Any other comment? Anybody in? Oh, another one.
For the record, my name is Joseph Still. I am a Wareham resident and associate on conservation. I know we have...
Your address, please.
Nine Right Lane, Wareham, over in Kremes, they call it Slab City, if anyone's familiar with it. That area is actually known to be pretty wet as well, and I know there's a discussion, previous two commentators here mentioned endangered species. And I appreciate what you guys do as planning board members, but, you know, just keep in mind about the endangered wildlife that could potentially be affected in that area. It's certainly a lot of things people overlook, and not to say, and you guys do, but, you know, like I said, I do appreciate everything you guys do for the town, and that's just something I ask you to consider.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? John, anyone in the ether? Seeing no more hands in the audience, would you like to continue this hearing?
Yes, we would like to continue. I think your next week's pretty full.
Not the twentieth, or the, how about the second?
Yeah, so June...
Uh, tenth?
Tenth.
Twenty-fourth? No, no, how about the twenty-fourth? The tenth, how busy, I just...
Twenty-fourth, yeah. We got, what have we got on the tenth?
We moved New Leaf. All right, so let's...
This is good, Ferring Hill back on the tenth.
Yeah, that, it's not, it'll be just a discussion.
It's gonna be a continue.
Mike has the calendar. Let's, the tenth looks okay?
Yep. The tenth?
Yeah.
Prior to that, we'll submit.
Wait, I need to make a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we continue the hearing to the tenth, June tenth.
June tenth. Mike, a second?
Yes.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And aye. And again, before you comment, I don't think it applies to your project, but please be aware that Chairman King is not going to continue his term at the end of June, so this is the board that will have, will be voting. So the new member probably won't be able to pass the mull-in rule and vote on this project.
Okay.
That goes for all the projects that are before the board right now. So you were going to speak again?
I was just going to say, our hope, our goal for that is to be able to submit the package, also give that to Phil to take a look at, and so you guys will be well-prepared, and if there's any other comments back and forth, you know?
Great.
So, okay.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to read a notice of public hearing. The Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May thirteenth, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in room 520, even though the announcement said room 320, of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 488 Marion Road, Ware, Massachusetts, to hear testimony on the consistency of the urban renewal plan with the Wareham Master Plan. So I do remind any citizens who do speak during the public hearing, we're looking for comments on the consistency of the plan with the master plan. We're not going to rehash the goodness or badness of...
On height?
On height or things like that. This is specifically dealing, the Planning Board's charter is to discuss consistency with the master plan. Dan.
Mr. Chairman, Planning Board, thank you for holding this hearing today. My name's Dan Butler. I'm the chairman of the Wareham Redevelopment Authority, and it's my pleasure to introduce this topic to the public during this public hearing. Again, I want to thank you for all the work you've done prior to this, to help us get this urban renewal plan to the point where it is today. For the public, if I could just elaborate a little bit on why we are here, we do need you, the Planning Board, to decide if the urban renewal plan that we proposed sending to the state for approval comports with the Wareham Master Plan. That's required by Chapter 121B of Massachusetts General Law, and in particular, it states in Section 48 that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities shall not approve any urban renewal plan unless the Planning Board has found that the urban renewal plan conforms to the comprehensive plan, in our case, Wareham, the Wareham Master Plan 2020. Why is that important? That's very important, because we will need funding in order to accomplish this plan. Section 53 of that same law states, "Any city or town acting by and through its urban renewal agency may apply to the department for an urban renewal assistance grant to meet in part the cost of an approved urban renewal project." The Wareham Master Plan 2020 very, is a document that we read very carefully as we began to develop this plan, and I contend that we do, with this urban renewal plan, conform to the Wareham Master Plan 2020. And I'll just cite two examples. Page 22 in the Master Plan 2020, under Traditional Town Centers, the plan states, "Residents have identified these neighborhoods, traditional town centers, as deserving of more investment and more tender loving care." And the master plan goal is to support traditional town centers as unique districts that build on Wareham's character and have great potential for return on public and private investment. And on page 26, under Land Use, "A land use goal in the Master Plan 2020 is focused redevelopment and improvements to Wareham Village and Onset Village. Strategy one under that goal is invest resources and other non-programmed redevelopment funds in infrastructure that improves the villages' appearance and that leads to private investments." Performance outcomes that we seek in this plan, the master plan, are increased sales and property values in the villages, and decreased vacancy rates and derelict properties. And that's what we're striving to achieve with the urban renewal plan. I'll only identify a few key elements in the plan. The plan is available online. It's over three hundred pages, which is why I don't have a copy of it here with me today. But it is available to review. And the main plan is about seventy-eight pages, so that is easy, an easy read, a lot of pictures, a lot of graphics. So hopefully, the public has had a chance to digest it. But key elements of this urban renewal plan are, one, revitalize Wareham Village, incentivize private investments. Two, create WV1R, the sub-district that the town, at town meeting approved last spring. Three, develop guidelines and design standards, something that you are actively working on now at the Planning Board. Four, consider air rights over Merchant's Way. Five, improve public access to the waterfront, something we are working on aggressively at the Redevelopment Authority. Six, facilitate climate resiliency. And seven, facilitate transit-oriented development. We have with us today Mr. Ken Buckland. As you heard from earlier, Mr. Buckland, our town planner, was instrumental in driving this plan to this point. He's a key architect of what's in this plan. He understands what we needed to have in this plan. And we also contracted for the expertise of an urban planner, Ms. Emily Innis of Innis Associates, and I believe Emily is with us also virtually today, and would be available to hear what the public has to say. We're very eager to hear the public's feedback and then be available to address comments and questions.
Is Ms. Innis going to walk through the presentation?
Emily, do you have any other, any other details you'd like to walk through in terms of the presentation of the plan?
Good evening, everyone. Just for the record, Emily Innis of Innis Associates. Dan, I think you covered most of it, so if not all of it, I'm certainly happy to share any images or anything the board wants to see, but I also want to be respectful of their time. I've watched the agenda so far, I know they have a busy evening.
Okay. Just for the record, we were provided with a document called Wareham Village Redevelopment Plan, Planning Board, May thirteenth, 2024, from Innis Associates, which is some pictures and some responses to many of the things that Mr. Butler said. We'll make sure this gets posted, so she's not going to go through it. Josh, Ken, can we just get this just posted somewhere on the Planning Board site?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
And for the record, I am certainly happy to go through it if you'd like me to, but it's entirely up to yourselves.
Do you guys want to go through this presentation, or you want to just?
I'm okay without...
Mike? All right.
Consistent with what we've been talking about for a while.
I looked at it, yeah. Sam?
Seen it?
Okay. So before we open it to public comment, are there any questions or comments from the board?
Is there anybody in the audience who wants to?
No, no, before I open it to the audience, I'm giving you guys a chance to speak. We have to answer the question, do we find it consistent with the master plan? That's, we're going to take a vote on that at the end, so if you have any comments now...
I'm curious to hear from you.
Okay. Sam?
No, I think you've done a great job, and I think it is consistent. I've seen the presentation twice, read the material, I think it's a great job.
Okay. Mike? Do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Before opening it to the public, I'll refer to Mr. Buckland. I do want to note for the record that Mr. Buckland has issued a report from the Planning Office to the Planning Board summarizing the Planning Office's, I'm going to use the word thoughts, but summary of their assessment of how the plan comports with the master plan, and in summary, having read it, very, very similar to the statements that Mr. Butler has made. And we should make your report available to the public as well, Ken. Do you want to add anything to my summary?
No, I think you've covered it very well. I think we can post these and have it available for people to look at that are interested in seeing what the results of the urban renewal plan were and how it applies to the master plan, which the Planning Board has worked very hard on, as a matter of fact, and updated in 2020.
Yes. All right. So hearing no more comments from the board. Mr. Faraday, you have any comments from the Planning Office? So I'm opening it for public comment. Anyone from the public would like to address the matter? Yes, please.
Hi, how are you? I'm Kim Chib. I live in Pinehurst, and I've lived here since 1996, and I just wanted to show my support for the plan as it's consistent with the master plan, and my appreciation for the public input that has been requested and considered throughout the whole process, right from the beginning with, before we had an actual plan in place. But I think we've been waiting for thirty years for this downtown to become revitalized, and I'm very pleased with the outcome so far, and hopefully, there'll be more people in support.
Thank you. Anyone else? John, anyone in the ether?
I have one, Mr. Manise.
Ah, Mr. Manise. The chair recognizes Mr. Manise.
Hello, everybody. Jim Manise, Crenberry Highway. I did review the documents earlier, and they look good. My only question is, is, is there going to be an environmental impact report required in order to move the study forward, the urban renewal plan forward? I know that was a discussion with Redevelopment Authority. I think it's an important piece in order to get this completed.
I'll let you answer that if you want. It's not speaking directly to the question, but...
Yeah, I'd like to ask Emily Innis to provide the answer. She knows what the current state of affairs is with regard to whether the environmental impact report is required.
Actually, Dan, I was going to defer to Ken on that one, because I know he's been talking directly to a set of engineers. Not to dodge the question, but Ken, I'll defer to you.
Sure. Another difference, differential pass handoff here. The, there is a requirement that an environmental impact statement be prepared when there's an environmental justice community next door to the urban renewal area. And that's the case in this situation, in the downtown. There is an environmental justice neighborhood adjacent to the downtown, and that's part of the reason why the downtown needs urban renewal. And it must be carefully done, and that's the reason why there's an environmental impact statement, it's environmental impact report that's required to be filed, and we are up against that. We, although there has been some discussion amongst some towns about asking for a change in the, in the regulations of the state, at this point, it's a requirement that the rather expensive environmental impact report be prepared and filed before the urban renewal plan can be officially adopted and approved. So Jim, yes, the environmental impact report has to be done.
Thank you, and I think it would behoove everyone to try to move that forward, so that it can move both the urban renewal plan and the master plan, which reflects it, forward. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Yes, please.
Angela Dunham, Forty Oak Street. I'm here speaking as a private citizen, not wearing any of my hats through Town Hall. I have a question about the design standards, Ken, that you mentioned? If they are online, ready for us to review, or when that's going to be reviewed?
I'll answer that question. The design standards were approved for the Wareham Redevelopment District in the weeks following the spring town meeting last year, and they are posted, as far as I know, on the website.
I'm not sure if they're...
That's correct.
Yes, I, so they should be posted on the Planning Board page. I can look and see if I can find them. Let's go back. I'm not getting a great response. But yes, they were approved in May of 2023, the first phase of the design standards by this board, and I can't get on the web, so Jane, if you can see. And they should be posted on the website. If not, Josh, we'll follow up after, just to make sure that they are, but they were voted and approved by this board.
Okay, so I've been mistakenly thinking that the design standards were just on hold, and that at one time I was thinking that, or there was a comment that the builders or developers would come in and present their plans and then proceed individually as they came in to take over a property, or...
That is correct. That's what the process would be. If they are doing at this, and Ken, keep me honest, but if they do a project in the downtown, they need to submit a building permit, and the building inspector, Mr. Turner, would... permit. And the building inspector, Mr. Turner, would review their request for building permit and direct them either to the planning board or the ZBA to do a design review and for applicability to those standards.
They should be posted, excuse me, under the rules and regulations, and they are not there.
Okay.
Division Rules and Regulations and Site Plan Review and Special Permit Rules and Regulations are there.
Okay. So we need to make sure they are posted, but they were approved, and they should have been posted. I apologize that they're not. But.
So the builders can come in and present a plan, and then that would be the design standard that would be approved or not? Or there are design standards already in place or designs in place that they have to adhere to?
There are design standards that their, their design would need to?
Their individual designs would come in before you boards?
Yes, and then.
And then the, the design standards would be applied to them, and they'd be measured by the, the design standards and reviewed according to what the design standards say.
Okay, thank you. I haven't had a chance to see that since it wasn't up, and I've been waiting.
I apologize. It was, they were, they were approved in May of last year.
Okay, this is the first I'm hearing of it. Doesn't mean it wasn't there. The other question I have is the railroad company and the tracks that run along behind Merchant's Way. Has the railroad company made any comment or had any input as to how this is going to affect the tracks back there? Obviously, they've been doing a lot of work.
All right, I'm going to allow that, but that doesn't speak to the question that we're addressing, which is how does the plan align with the master plan?
Okay.
So.
Okay, you don't, then we don't have to go there. I just.
We can. If somebody knows the answer quickly.
Yes, I'll answer that one, because it does go to the master plan as well.
Oh, it does? Okay, I didn't see that.
Waterfront development and waterfront activities. And the MBTA has granted us a pedestrian grade level crossing of the tracks so that we can access the waterfront and put waterfront activities out onto the, on the state property to extend out into the water. So that's what we're looking at right now, and we're doing a study of the feasibility of a fishing pier and coastal walkway and a kayak launch in that area.
Have those designs been put up online anywhere or been discussed at a public hearing? Or they're just?
We had an initial public meeting on it with no designs as yet, just a conversation about needs. And we're, we had a site visit, and the, we have, we're trying to schedule a meeting with the state to go over their design parameters for the crossings, so we know exactly where the crossing could be located. And it's still in process, so stay in touch, follow online, and we'll get you the information you need to let you know where the study is at this point.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay.
Sure.
I'm going to correct myself, backtrack a little bit here. Apparently, the rules and regulations, the design standards are under A.
A?
A for adopted rules and regulations, separate from rules and regulations.
But those others were adopted as well, so.
Those others are adopted, but the adopted part comes after rules and regulations.
I see.
That's what it comes before. So it's in there. It's posted.
Thank you, Jane. Okay.
I, I thought they were there, but I, I apologize.
No, no. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for speaking. Alan, I'll let you recognize in a minute. I forgot to announce at the beginning, several of the citizens have been, and I think Mr. Lenta has said, has been sending a lot of comments on our projects. Right now, the town website is overloaded on several of our projects, and we can't post any additional material that's being worked on by the planning office. I don't know what the resolution is, but it's, we've overloaded the system. So we're working on it. Mr. Slaven?
Just to clarify, for the railroad property, et cetera.
Could you also identify yourself?
Alan Slaven, retired selectman.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Buckland and I actually, some years ago, went to Mass DOT Rail to talk about the gate crossings. At that time there, they tried to discourage us from doing anything by throwing every roadblock in front of us as possible. We kind of smiled at them. We told them we'd be back in a year or so. I don't give in easily. We're at a point now where they're, they would actually build the railroad cross, control gate crossings. We would not. They control all of it. We were told that they wanted us to put a fence up all along the way of the Cape Flyer route as a partial piece. My suggestion to Ken at the time was, they're going to have to put that fence up sooner or later, so let's just wait and see what happens. But the, just so everybody understands, the federal government gives the railroad certain rules and regulations. The railroad property is completely separate from the town. The town has no rights to do any kind of restrictions or anything. The railroad can do whatever they want with that property. They can basically take it and put it right to the ground as far as shrubbery. Technically, you're not allowed to cross those tracks. You're supposed to be arrested if you do and go over the fish, et cetera. So it's not an easy thing to do. Mr. Buckland has, in his office, there are plans that were done by Sal Pena, who came before Ken, that actually has the plans that was paid for showing the two gazebos going out into the water, showing the boardwalk, et cetera. We've already done this. I hate when we keep spending money on studies that go nowhere, and they waste the taxpayers' money. So everything is there. It's just a matter of whether or not we can come up with a way to satisfy Mass DOT Rail to go ahead. Then we have to figure out how we get with the Conservation Commission, because once you go over, the railroad tracks technically are the town property, which is the water, not the land. Will they allow that or not? It's a very difficult situation, and it's also extremely difficult to figure out how we go ahead and do the over-air building that we're talking about for redevelopment, because how do you secure that down and not be in the railroad's property? And for those who have never bothered to look at this at all, 1954, Mike, I think, he's old enough to know, the town of Wareham was given by New Haven Railroad, I think for a dollar. Merchant's Way. Merchant's Way is not a street. It's not a way. It's a parking lot, which was given to the town, because that was the parking lot for New Haven Railroad. And the deal was that we had to maintain 1,500 square foot piece of land in case New Haven Railroad, at that time, everyone wanted to come back in and open a train station there. That's still in effect, even though it's gone from New Haven Railroad to One Piece now. Mass DOT Rail owns the tracks and everything else. So this is not easy. I tried to get Mass DOT Rail to remove that codicil. We've been unable to do it. So they still have that right to that piece of land, whether we like it or not. If they could commit at any time and say, we want our 1,500 square feet back, we'd have to give it to them. So this is a very complicated situation. And as I say, the railroad land goes basically in front of where the Cape Flyer is, goes up, down a ways, and it goes right to the water. It's all railroad property. We have no control over any of that. So any discussion having to do with that property is completely out of our hands. I just want to make sure everybody understands that Ken and I have worked very hard for over 10 years now to try and resolve this, and we've had no success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Oh, you're going to comment. Welcome.
Jillian Morton, Great Neck Road, here as a citizen. I just, I want to reiterate the amount of work that goes into this sort of planning, and I know Dan's been very involved. I've been in some of the citizen groups. And it's really important and kind of sad to see that there aren't more people here supporting this, especially business owners. So, you know, I think that's something that's just hard, but this is the future of the town. This is what we're, we're going to have as our legacy. And it's really important work they're doing, the amount of funding that will help the downtown. It is complex. It is a process. But the idea that it's going to really leave something that's, that's beautiful for our kids, it's very exciting to me. So I commend you guys for doing that. I really do, Dan. So I just want to say that.
Thank you. What's nice to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
All right. I don't see any more hands. So I would look for a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So now we need a motion or deliberation on whether we will write a letter recommending that we find, not recommending, that we find that the redevelopment plan as presented is consistent with the master plan. Discussion.
I said early, I believe it is.
I'm with Sam. Same vote.
All right, good. So I would look for a motion. How do we want to phrase this? That we, we recommend to the select board, we would recommend to the select board, right, Ken? Our recommendation goes to the select board?
I think you can recommend to the Secretary of Executive Office of Livingable Communities, Housing and Livingable Communities.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to the Secretary of Housing and Livingable Communities, that the Wareham Planning Board finds the redevelopment plan consistent with the master plan.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. The chair votes aye. So in summary, the Wareham Planning Board does find that the urban renewal plan, the draft dated December 2023, that's still the current draft, is consistent with the master plan dated 2020, and as such, will write a letter to the Secretary of, yes, and I'll look.
Who will do that?
I'll work with the planning office to either write it or help write it, or, yes, somebody will write it. It will get written. Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. We have one more item on the agenda. I refer you to, Sonia didn't bring any bills for me to sign, so, okay. So I'm going to let Josh come forward. Josh has done a great deal of work to make an improvement on the permitting and application process. I did have an opportunity to do a quick review, and I think it will be a great improvement. And if we support it, we can begin to move in that direction immediately. So Josh?
Sure. I'm joining out as panelist. I will share my screen now.
Oh, I forgot the minutes.
So just very briefly, the planning board and the zoning board, as of right now, post their projects on the town website. It's an effective way of getting information to the public, but it is limited in file sizes. So there was a request tonight to add Innes Associates Wareham Village Redevelopment Plan to the website. It is now up there, and you can see here, planning board documents, urban renewal plan, and it is posted. I would say the website works for a lot of projects, but specifically, if we look at some projects you have opened currently, I'll use 370 County Road as an example. No, I won't.
It's a short one. Go to Sarah John.
Yeah.
Up one.
Up one, yeah, that one, I believe, is the one that's completely.
Okay, so as you can see, the website can get quite cluttered with attachments, site plans, public comment, review letters, all these things. And the system is capped at 100 megabytes. So once it's capped, that's where we're seeing problems with some of the projects we have now. There's nowhere to put it. We are physically unable to add anything new. Where we are not limited is with the viewpoint Open Gov system. This is something that has been tested and practiced with the Conservation Commission, and I would say it's going very well as far as community involvement, getting this information out to the public. And it is a way to organize documents and have them uploaded via applicants versus department staff doing that. So currently, your regulations say that an electronic copy needs to be submitted to the planning office. I think we can consider this as just the way to accept an electronic copy. So I will quickly, so if you were ever looking, well, I'll, I'll show you currently what Conservation is doing, because they've been the test subject of what I'm trying to accomplish. So, for example, if you were to go to the town website, you're a citizen, you see that the Conservation Commission is having a meeting, you open the agenda, and here's the agenda. Maybe you're interested on this project for Six Valley Road. I have hyperlink this to the viewpoint system, so you click that, and it brings you to the project that you're interested in. This will give you all the information in the public record, applicants, documents, and it has the ability to attach files, which could be public comments, site plans, the actual application, and determinations made by boards. So the request tonight from the planning board is to accept viewpoint as the electronic submission platform. I will also mention that the town, at one point, had unlimited email data. We have since not had unlimited email data, and we're being charged overages for inboxes being too full. And it gets to the point where if your inbox is too full, you can't even send out an email. So I've been required to go through a lot of what I have in my email, which quickly adds up with site plans, the amount of space required. I basically had to clear a lot of emails just to be able to send an email. So this would remove applicants sending large site plans to town staff, but still easily accessible by the town staff. So I think, you know, that's what you're here to discuss, is accepting this electronic.
Are you able to show the form that you put together for us?
Yes. So I will say a lot of this form would be kind of background. Let me get there. So if I was an applicant and I was going to submit a application to the planning department, I would look for the planning department, and I would click on planning application. Now, as you know, the planning department can receive a lot of different applications, but kind of review them all in one public hearing, where you have site plan review with a special permit, zoning has variances as well. So an applicant would come in, they'd put in their applicant information, they'd put in a location of where they're doing it. This is searchable by project address and map and lot. And then you would go through and you would choose what, what you're asking the planning department to review. So as you click on these, it populates more sections within the sheet that need to be, that are requirements. And a lot of these are based off of your site plan review checklist, subdivision, and basically any checklist that you have, we can make a required field so that you receive that information.
It currently, and I looked at it with Josh, currently maps our application forms pretty closely. We probably want to make some continued improvements, but maps what we've got right now pretty closely.
Yeah, I would say it's pretty safe that we could publish this, have an applicant use it, and have a final review for the planning board. That's, I would say, 90% accurate of everything that you look for. And as, and maybe as we identify things that are missing, it's extremely easy to update this.
And you could add, if there's something that's not in the checklist, we could still add that document.
That's correct.
To the collection.
Well, and you just answered my first question, which is how editable is this? Which is, you said that it's easy to update, which is great, because, you know, once we get using it, we may see things more readily.
So, for example, we may sit here at one of the hearings, and you may say, I would really like it if the applicant gave us this every time for, you know, site plan review. I could have that implemented the next day, and it would be no stress on the department.
And the mechanism for doing that is to update the rules and regulations that we've already adopted. We have to have a public hearing, but we update the rules and regulations, and then it can immediately, can immediately be reflected. This is consistent with the current rules and regulations.
That would be great, yeah.
And I'll show you one more backend aspect of what this accomplishes, is a lot of your permits require, let me discard this, require sign off or comment from other departments. require sign off or comment from other departments. So when I go into, this is all backend. You may not see much of this, but we go into the planning application and we look at the workflow of that application. The form is submitted to the town, planning board, town clerk. One of your verifications is from John Foster, our tax collector. So he would have the ability to sign off. We would then have a sign off for, a payment sign off through the planning department and we would probably make the town clerk sign off at the same time. Those would be two required steps in the same process. And then it would be sent to boards and committees that you have requested input from. So they would have 21 days to make those comments. And then it would move on to, and we could talk about what a final approval is, but it's probably the commission's consideration. And then the 21-day appeal where the town clerk would finally sign off saying the appeal period has lapsed and, and the applicant can move forward. So that's kind of background stuff, but it's, it's an easy way for the planning department to know that it's being accomplished.
One other thing I really liked is all these applications are going to be coded to map and lot. And if you click on it, you can go over to the map and lot and you will see all of the things going on at that...
Right, I can, yeah, let me show you one for example.
So you could see what Concom is doing. You could see what Mr. Turner has been doing. You could see building permits.
So here's County Road. Currently, they have a building, a building permit in front of them and a notice of intent for conservation. If there were, let's say that there was a zoning violation, our zoning enforcement officer could add that as an attachment and it would be tied to map and lot. So no longer would you have to go to him to find out if there's ever been one. It's, it's uploaded and tied to the map and lot.
Is this my moment to, to lodge my frustration with all the dates that are put on things, including the, the project numbers that are not year first?
Did we fix that?
Year, month, day?
Oh, okay, so...
It's so frustrating.
I think you may like this then. So the planning application is submitted. It will be different than what you guys currently have. It will have a prefix to it. Again, that's changeable if you don't like plan or whatever. But, and then it's year and then the permit that you received that year.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm so tired of them being sorted by month. So, you know, the 12th project from '22, '23, and '24 is all in the same place. After the 11th project from '22.
So yes, that would be addressed with the new sorting of it.
Thank you.
21st century.
There you go.
Yeah, but the other thing I like is that we could see everything that's going on at a site.
Yeah, that's really nice.
So if Mr. Cudaro does inspections for Concom or he does inspections for some other department and our inspections, they're all going to be attached to that, to that property in perpetuity.
So is, are we going to go back at all and put the paperwork with the files from previous projects? The, the ones that we're reviewing right now in there?
I, I don't, back file scanning is going to be a lot of work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm just thinking about...
If you could find us a nice intern to take on that task.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about the ones that are active, not the ones that are, that are past, but the ones that are active.
We could see. But, but I think if we're supportive, we can make a motion tonight that says effective Monday next, all new applications.
I'm good with that.
I don't know that we could say that all the old applications... So we'll have a bifurcated process for a while, but a lot of our applications are...
Are closing out.
Closing out.
I hope so. That would be nice. But it would be nice to really be on that consistently because it sounds way more organized than where we are right now.
I think it would be a step forward.
Oh, gosh, yes.
I will also mention, I would say 90% of the town's applications are already on this system. The planning and zoning are some of the last boards to fall in line, so to speak.
Okay. Can we vote?
I would look for a motion to support this effective. When would you like to make this effective, Josh?
Yesterday.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Couple of years ago.
I would still like to sit down with some staff in our office just to make sure we're really ready to do it and have them caught up and up to speed. With it being halfway through the month, maybe a June 1st start would be appropriate.
Yep.
That's what I was going to recommend.
Motion that we adopt as of June 1st.
Like it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Josh.
That's a good job.
Don't, don't rush off yet. In my haste to move through the agenda, I got ahead of myself. We have item one on the agenda. We have two sets of minutes to approve, March 25th and April 15th. Discussion?
Some Scrivener's errors.
So let's just send those to...
Yeah.
Sonia.
Jane is spelled with a J, not an S. Although some things it's good for me to be seen.
I'm ready to make a motion, Carol.
It's only 8:15. We're early. I thought we were going to be here all night.
This is good. This is a good thing.
Okay. Mike, comment?
No, I'm happy as a clam over you.
Okay. So I remind, before we close, next Monday, we have executive session, a planning board meeting, June 5th. June 5th.
Is the executive session going to be first before the meeting or after?
First. And you got the message about June 5th? We need to be available.
Yes.
Mike?
Wednesday.
Yeah. Yes.
We need to make...
I will be on next week's meeting online.
Remotely, okay.
We need to make sure on our website, people know we're going to be on executive first.
I did, I did announce it, but the agenda, we just need to have executive session on the, on clear.
We don't want a whole bunch of people out in the hallway.
The door was locked.
So are we voting on these or...
So you can make your motion now.
Make a motion, we accept both minutes.
All in favor? Or I need a second?
I have an announcement to make on the minutes as well.
Okay, let's, let's finish this and you can make your announcement. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. So we accept the minutes of March 25th and April 15th as annotated with some Scrivener's errors.